Need any executive session tonight?
I have three that I would suggest, Mr. Chairman. One, a legal discussion concerning input we've had from the town's attorney about the Blue House.
Okay.
One, personnel matter regarding Lister's staffing, which we're going to discuss in open session as well. And the third would be the possibility of reviewing roof estimates.
Top contractor.
I'd like to discuss that in open, too.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Transfer station roof, that is.
Transfer station roof. Do I have a motion?
No.
amend it.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Do we need to amend the agenda tonight for any reason?
We had that one set of audit-related questionnaires, Mr. Chairman, that Helen has asked before the select board signature is on.
All right. Anything else? Need a motion, amend the agenda?
So moved.
We have seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We need to adopt the amended agenda. We have a motion to adopt. Do we have a motion? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Act on the select board minutes of August 21st. Are there any admissions, corrections? There are none. We will sign them. Do we have any questions on the orders tonight? No questions?
No, it was all pretty self-explanatory.
Wow. We will sign them then.
Plus Jeff's in a hurry.
Oh, sorry about that.
Sign it, I'll make you Jason. Sign it, I'll make you Jason.
I know. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town has traded in its Ford Explorer Police Cruiser and taken delivery of its new Dodge Cruiser pickup truck. There is a photo in tonight's packets regarding how it will look once deep out. Markowski Excavating wrapped up its pre-paving road reconstruction work on the stretch of West Creek Road between the Bobbi Farm and the Hard Farm on Friday, August 23rd, approximately one week ahead of schedule. Paving is expected to take place in mid-October. Markowski Excavating began approximately four weeks of work reconstructing the stretch of Whipple Hollow Road between the railroad trestle and the intersection of West Creek Road to the east and Dido's Dip to the west on Tuesday, August 27th. Paving again is expected to take place in mid-October. There will be a road closure on Saturday, the 7th, which has been coordinated with Almia and Casella as they install three culverts across the road. There will be a wait around that, I'm told, through Almia's facility. The Highway Crew now intends to work on the project to widen West Creek Road a bit to better enable two trucks to pass each other in the area where Almia recently raised a house they had purchased across from Joel Robbins' property. And that is intended now to take place about Monday, September 16th. Stay tuned for updates. The Highway Crew recently installed stone-lined ditching along both edges of Sugar Hollow Road about a mile north of the intersection with Plains Road. This project addressed a hydrologically-connected segment of roadway, which means a road near water, appearing in our road inventory to-do list set forth by our friends at the Regional Planning Commission and is eighty percent funded by a Better Roads grant from the state. In fact, we met with our friends at the RRPC today to talk about next projects through the Grants and Aid Program, and that will involve stretches near the intersection of Creed Hill and Oxbow that both have had some water shedding issues, and so there'll be some ditching there as well. On Wednesday, September 11th, at 10 o'clock, there'll be another meeting between town officials and representatives from FEMA to discuss the town's request for compensation relating to the April 15 rainstorm which caused damage to several town roads. The town's annual external audit will take place here at the town offices during the week of September 16th. Veterans Day is now approaching and on our calendars for Monday, November 11th, at 11 o'clock. If anyone has suggestions regarding a main keynote speaker, please let me know. I'm trying to put that program together. The salt shed update we've received from Otter Creek tells us that they've had some setbacks with delays due to the wetland permitting portion of the project and the need to exempt the site from FEMA's floodplain, which can be done but involves some bureaucracy. We are hopeful that we can go out to bid with the project in the fall with the notion of construction in the spring or summer of 2020. Finally, there'll be a staff meeting on Thursday, September 5th, tomorrow, here in the conference room of the town office building. As always, selectmen are invited to attend. We'd appreciate anybody who wants to do so.
Very good.
Great.
Any select board members have remarks this evening?
Yeah, one question, and maybe it needs to be brought up for our next meeting. What's going on with our backhoe? It's probably...
The last I heard is it's still at the shop, and we haven't heard anything substantive about what their diagnosis has been or whether they've even gotten to it. So, don't have much to offer, but I hope that we'll have an update at the next meeting.
By that meeting, yeah.
To do so, one way or the other.
Yep, and then my other... You've been dealing with Granite Communications on lowering the cost of our phones and that stuff.
Yeah.
I just, I know you... In your email, you said you wanted to wait six months. I'm thinking maybe a couple months. I mean, if it's a significant lowering and it saves the town money, so maybe rather than waiting the full six months, give Virgens a couple months and then...
And part of that was to kind of shake loose a guy who was pursuing us with solicitations that we hadn't asked for. But, as you say, it does sound intriguing.
Yes.
The idea of having our existing service with no heavy lifting and reduced rates through their wholesale purchasing. But when I did speak to Virgens, which was the only entity that I had any dealings with as reference, they told us that they had just signed up. So, yeah, I'll be happy to check in with them in a couple of months and let us all know how that looks.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I would just like to mention that the Satin and Steel concert that didn't play at Pittsford Day because it rained out, are planning to be in Pittsburgh on the 28th of September, which is a Saturday, performing at the rec from 3:00 to 6:00, I believe.
We have had some discussions with Village Farm, but it's premature, I think, to make an announcement about their role.
We do have the date.
We do have a date.
We've got the date, weather permitting, and should be... fulfill their obligation.
I'd love to have a chat with you maybe when you're feeling better the next day or two to lock that down.
Yep, sounds good.
By the way, I do want to point out on Alicia's behalf. She's not feeling well, couldn't make tonight's meeting, but she wanted to point out that she had been contacted from a resident, by a resident Ivy Dixon, who states that she was almost hit in the dangerous crosswalk in front of Kamutas the other day, and that maybe we should take steps to freshen up the crosswalks. Of course, that's her Vtrans jurisdiction, but in the past, we've had similar kind of complaints from the late Gene Davies, who was always quite nervous coming across the street. And it wouldn't hurt us to raise that concern with Vtrans again.
Might send them off alone.
Yes, absolutely.
Anybody else? Any public comment this evening?
Oh, I never pass a chance to spout. If I may, Vtrans probably would give the town permission to re-strike the crosswalk. They've done that to Wallingford on numerous occasions, to the point where they finally gave Wallingford carte blanche to be able to do their own parking signs and their own striking. So, that is a really dangerous...
It is a dangerous spot.
I don't understand why there's no lighting. I mean, it's just... anyway.
And maybe, along with that request, maybe just mention lighting so it... Because they may not have ever contemplated that thought.
Or it might be on their 2028 plan.
Well, it might be, but...
Probably, yeah.
It's... Won't hurt to ask.
Anybody else?
I think the problem is where the crosswalk, the walk is positioned.
It is a...
Well, you can't see it. When you're driving, it's...
In a corner, it's...
It's in a corner and on a home.
It's where you have to have a light.
Yep, that's right there. Yeah.
I'll be happy to mention it.
Mention it, they could have a light there. Like to have at the church.
Speaking of public comment...
In the school, yep.
I want to relate a public comment from Dave Rosado, who was interested in our discussion of the sidewalk issue on the village sidewalk on Route 7. And he suggested that the select board consider, as an alternative to restoring the existing sidewalk, perhaps repurposing the footpath on the other side of the road. He said that that would be a very much less expensive approach to simply take the existing footpath, install a couple of crosswalks to the sidewalk. And I told him I'd be happy to pass that on to you for your consideration.
I don't know if it would address the problem that we have there over the cars and people.
No, but if the sidewalk was all on the other side, people wouldn't be walking. I mean, but anyway, we can discuss that when we get to the sidewalk.
Yep. Okay, we will go into whole business?
We do have, actually, Jeff Glasusi, who's under some time constraints, if we could get to him.
Sure.
You need to go to another meeting and another town.
All right, okay.
This is usually the Planning Commission meeting for West Rollin', and I'm usually the recorder.
Okay.
So, they start at 7:00, and I had someone pitch in for me. But if I could just address this issue here, then I'll get out of your way.
All right.
And this is...
This is under new business.
New business, yes.
Under new business. You folks all have a copy of the zoning fee schedule proposal. Okay, so this is an earth-shattering news, but on July 1st, the state legislature enacted a new legislative bill that required town clerks to raise their fees. And it also changed, interestingly enough, a requirement that all surveys and boundary line adjustments now be accompanied by a licensed survey to be recorded on an I-LI or the town. The Planning Commission in Pittsburgh has fiercely resisted the requirement of requiring a survey for these things, but now the state is over. And so, it seemed like an opportune time in which to update and refresh the look of the fee schedule. And in doing so, I've tried to add a little bit of an explanation about what category the fee is. I really haven't changed the fee schedule at all. But I've... except for the recording fees. And I did add something that I've been doing a lot of in almost every place. It's the lawyers will call me, or banks will call me, and they're looking for a review by the zoning administrator in a letter of compliance to regulations. So, I've set up an approach which seems to have been working, where if all they're looking for is an obvious violation, all I have to do is look in the file, maybe see if there's violations, or I'll look at the Lister's card and see what I have for permits. And if there's a deck on the Lister's card that's not in the permits, it's kind of a red flag. And I can do that in short order and just email the response, and that usually satisfies most of the requests. But there are attorneys, especially on commercial things, where they want a detailed letter of the zoning administrator's review and opinion of the properties, of the compliance to zoning. And so, that usually means I'll have to go down in the dungeon and pawn the files, and I'll do more research, and I'll do a site visit, and I'll go back farther. And it takes a little bit of time to pull all this together and then write a letter. So, I've decided that the lawyers should, you know, ante up. It's not uncommon in other towns. And all they do is pass the cost on to their clients. But, so I've suggested a fee which is about average for the towns I run across in Rollin County, of $75 for up to two hours' worth of work. And if they want more research, and I've seen that happen with commercials, then they're going to just compensate the town for our night time on that, so...
Is that per hour or for the two hours?
I'll read it. It's, "For a formal letter of the ZA review and opinion of compliance, an advance written request is required identifying any issues of specific concern, granting the zoning administrator permission to access at least the interior of the property, and including payment of the base fee for up to two hours of $75." That's a flat fee for up to two hours. And for additional time requested, additional fees of $30 an hour, plus any legal review. We just had one where we ended up having to call Gary Cuthbert for about an hour. And, you know, the town absorbed that. But here, I'm suggesting we should be able to pass that cost on.
And that's on your fee schedule?
It's in the narrative. It's about, "For each research time, for additional research time required or requested, additional fees for the ZA time will involve the invoiced at $30 an hour and any town legal attorney fees that may be incurred." So, it's pretty rare, but if we have to have a legal fee, then we should be entitled to pass it on to the person who's requested it. Usually not someone involved with the town. So, that's my suggestion. And hopefully, we'll add a little clarity to folks trying to figure out what the fees are. And that's, you know, and I did attach the existing fee schedule, which is kind of bare bones, and people don't quite understand if their project fits what category. So, in an extension to this discussion on fees, I'd like to put in two requests on the record here. We have an appeal by Ramon Davis to appeal the decision of a zoning administrator decision, which involves writing a no permit required for a 12-by-12 shed on his neighbor's land. And he's taken exception to this. So, he's come down, filed a formal appeal of the decision that no permit was required. And he's paid, because I've set up the fee schedule twice, he's paid more than he needs to for this application, which will be heard by the zoning board on September 23rd. So, I'm going to ask for a refund authority of $50 to settle that overpayment. And then, the other one is the town of Pittsburgh has applied for an application for the lifeguard shelter that the town board has approved, the select board has approved. Turns out, there's two issues, which just kind of popped into my head today because we were working on the permit application. And the two issues are, you look at the table of uses, and a structure in municipal playground or recreation areas, parks, is a conditional use. So, it goes to CBA for that. And the other condition is, is the shelter is in a floodplain. So, I already have the letter from Vermont Floodplain Manager that says that's all right, but it's a conditional use under the floodplain addendum in our zoning rules, that that needs to be approved by CBA. So, I'm asking the board to waive the usual zoning and recording fees to the recreation department, which, you know, the zoning fee would be $75 and $15 to record. Unfortunately, our zoning rules don't exempt municipality from its own... I suggested that, by the way, but somehow it hasn't happened.
So, we do need a motion to do that, wouldn't think, right?
Yeah, well, you've got two different issues.
Two issues, yeah. You've got to do the...
I don't even know why you would need something for Ramon Davis if he's overpaid.
No, you could just go ahead and refund that thing.
Be extra.
No, well, I don't have any authority to refund money. I thought the select board are the only ones that had that authority. You tell me what the policy is, I guess.
I don't think the board needs to act on that. Somebody's overpaid.
If you're overpaid, you're not going to do that.
I mean, you just said a little different policy.
Yeah, I think you can just go ahead and refund it.
That's all I have.
But do you want to act on the way that the rec area feels?
Yeah, we should act on that.
I'll make a motion to waive the fees on the lifeguard shelter.
Seconded. So, motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I think the recreation director will be the...
Now, we need to approve the fees?
Yep, and I got a question for Jeff. Okay, Board of Adjustment Review. All you've, other than, well, let me go back. Town clerk recording fees, I assume the $10 to $15 and the $15 to $25 is the state mandate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but everything else appears to be the same, except for application for a conditional use and application for a variance. You went from 75 to 100 on each of those. What was...
Because those, because they don't... Well, all right. The answer is simply that the old fees don't cover costs. And these fees barely cover costs.
Those were adopted in 2011, the last...
The original fees, I think, were, yeah, 2011.
Okay.
But, I mean, the time involved in the hearing with the recorder, with the newspaper, and the ZA's extra time to do decision drafting and so on, it's just, it eats it up.
Okay, well, it was more because you said all the fees... You said all the rest of the fees were the same and...
Almost was in there.
Well, and they weren't, so I just wanted it to be clarified so people understand.
Well, I appreciate you looking at it because it took a little time to give you that comparison, and that was why we did it, so...
Okay.
Actually, Jack gets credit for that. I mean, you set your fees any way you want. It's up to the board, obviously.
So, I guess we need a motion to adopt the fees.
I'll make the... Second?
Motion been made and seconded to approve the fees as stated. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Set your fees.
Are you coming, Jeff? Have you got any questions for me? I'll ask you a big excuse.
You may. You may be excused. You may be, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. You, too.
Okay, we will go back into old business.
And we have Ms. Marzegari.
Yes, we do. We had a discussion of the furniture road safety concerns.
I will point out that since her last visit, we have had the Rutland Regional Planning Commission post their traffic counter and with, there is a brief report in the packet setting forth their findings.
I had a chance to read it. The judge emailed it to me, so it's, like, inconclusive, basically. They said it was average speed, and it was, like, 32, which is, like, not... But, I don't know, it's... It is what it is, right? Yeah.
Pretty much, so...
Pretty much, that's thanks. Because it's, like, overall safety of, like, kids. And I'm not... And, like, as you guys see, there's a lot of vacant houses around here, and people want to move into this community when they want to feel safe. That sucks.
We'll point out that I did ask Devon from the region, the accident history in that area. He said there had been one reported accident over the last decade, property damage only, involving inclement weather. That doesn't mean that we couldn't consider more or better signage. There is a sign now that's pretty new approaching the curve from the far end of Route 7, from the far end of Post to Route 7, toward, from Hitchcock area. As you approach the curve, there's two, what could be described as safety-related signs. One, school bus stop ahead, and one, an advisory 25 mile an hour with a curve arrow, or an arrow...
And that's what I... Because I went down through there today again to look at it, because I knew we were going to be talking about it. Why can't we put, not that it's going to solve your problem, but it certainly wouldn't hurt, put one of those safe... Because it's the same curve either way. Put one of those signs on her side, so at least people see 25, and maybe they let off.
So, here's the thing. So, when I go over that corner and I hit 30, when it hits 35, I'm not going to speed up to 35 because my house is right there. People behind me get ticked off, and they try to pass me when there's other people on the road. So, that's why it's so annoying that this happened, and there's nothing I can do about it. So, I was kind of, like, just beating a dead horse right now. But, it's annoying because I'm not going to go above that, and people are passing, and that's what's making it unsafe. And I've called the police. I've asked them to come down and monitor that road between certain times. I have not seen them down there. I said, "Co-into that swath." I have not seen the Carreras. I have not seen them over near Shannon's property. I have not seen a cop sit over there and try and catch people. I've called and complained. I've called Worfel. I've talked to the people that are underneath him, and it's just very frustrating. I'm about ready to put a kid's scarecrow out in front of my, like, in the driveway, so, like, so close to the road, so when people go around, they're going to hit that because they're going onto my driveway. I mean, it's not really funny. I mean, it's just, it's frustrating because I have an eight-year-old who I don't want to take the bus because of that corner. And there's another girl who's right up there, and so, if I don't go above... If somebody is pissed because I'm going to speed limit down the road, and then just because I won't go 35, I'll stay at 30 because my house is right there. Why do I speed up to slow down? They're passing me. They're going to hit somebody who's on that road. And then, and not even adapting to the weather, wind, snow. It just sucks. It just really sucks.
On the police front, I will point out that we did have the speed feedback there for several days after hearing about the concerns.
But they have not been down there, like...
I understand.
They just have not been down there.
I understand.
Not at all on that road. They don't sit on that road. They sit at the school, or they're somewhere else there. Or they'll stop at the State Police Academy by the rec. That's not the issue. The issue is below, like, past. Or there's the cop that lives on the road, he'll go past the corner. But it's not on that swath.
Certainly could ask them to increase patrols there.
You can direct our police chief to certainly do that.
And could we put a sign? Because, I mean, it's a short distance there.
Yeah.
And again, you come... It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that 35 mile an hour sign is there. Especially right where it is, because it's right on that hill. You see that, and you step on it because you've got a straight stretch.
Yeah.
And the speed limit has been accelerated. I get that, and I, you know, I don't know...
And then, like, literally, I'm not going to, like, over... And then, people get annoyed because I'm not going that, and then they try to pass me, and I put my blinker on, and then I'm turning, and I'm... They try to pass me, and I'm turning. That's going to cause an accident, and I just, that's going to really not be good. So, and if I have my kid in my car, that's even... That'd even set me off more because he's my everything, so it's just frustrating. And it sticks with us, the speed is that way, and it just doesn't make sense the way the road is, and it is what it is, so I guess I'm just talking about it.
It's frustrating, I agree.
We can certainly look at the signage and the other approach, for sure.
And signage and less direct... And signage, unless director please to pay a little more attention out there.
But is there, and I'm new here, but is there a way we could just pull that 35 mile an hour sign?
Yeah.
And put it past the curve?
It doesn't mean that the speed limit is different.
No.
Because there is a town ordinance setting 35 as the default speed limit.
But there's a 30 sign before that, correct?
Yes, there is, and I...
Oh, sorry. Um, that, that speed limit sign, actually, that 35 miles an hour, was over by the State, because when I was growing up, when I was 15, 16, that's, that was right at the State Police Academy, right before Rebecca Davenport's house on the right, her white house. Um, that's where that speed limit sign was. So that did get pulled up and moved to the corner. I'm not kidding you. And that was in, that was in between the four years that I moved away, and I came back. So in four years, that speed limit sign was on it, so what, how did that get moved?
I've got no idea.
Especially my town.
No idea. I've been here 11 years.
So, because that was right on the corner there, right where, um, they put Rebecca's house here, and then they put a driveway, or somebody's driveway is going right there, that's exactly where that speed limit sign is. Because, granted, I was 15, 16, and hit 35, went on right there, because I knew that was 35. So it did get moved.
I don't know the history of the sign placement.
I don't know either.
The only reason I can imagine that 30 would be the speed limit earlier on from Route 7, is maybe the proximity to a school zone? I don't know.
The rec center.
So you got the right, you got, and there's a lot of houses, I mean...
Police academy, driveway, the rec...
I don't know who you would, I mean, personally, I certainly don't have a problem with moving the sign, if we can legally do it.
It's one thing to move the sign, but the, if the, if the town has an ordinance, it would be amending the town ordinance to change the speed limit. Again, I mean, just moving the sign doesn't change the speed limit.
So if the sign wasn't, hasn't been moved, or has been moved in the last four years, there's got to be some record of that, is that correct? Or, or they should have, or that sign should not have been moved?
I'm absolutely unaware of it, and I've been here 11 years. I'd be happy to talk with my highway foreman, they would be the ones who would be involved in it.
Right where they put that driveway, literally, they picked that sign up and put it over to that corner, or to where my thing.
I can make inquiries about that.
So it's like, my question is, I know that sign was there, and you can ask Rebecca, or other people to know that it was there, um, how did that get moved, and...
No idea.
There's got to be record.
Can you tell me where, where you believe the original location was?
I told you, um, so...
Can you give it to me again?
Okay, um, do you know Rebecca Davenport's house?
No, I don't.
Okay, um, where the State Police Academy is?
Yes.
Yeah?
Um, right across the street, right...
The next house on the, on the road.
The first house, right after the State Police Academy, on the right.
Also, just before Tom Carrera's driveway then.
Is Rebecca Davenport's house.
Or not Tom, uh...
They put a new driveway out, going way out...
That driveway, right where that driveway is, that's where the speed limit sign was, right where that driveway is, on Rebecca's.
Yeah.
And I keep saying that, because I know, I know her, I used to go visit her a lot.
But wouldn't it, if you got a, right, let's just say at the beginning of Furnace Road, you got a 30 mile an hour speed limit sign.
Right.
Wouldn't that speed limit stay until you hit a 35, or a 50, or whatever?
Well, I think Chief Warful would be a good person to ask about this, but also the LCT on the legal side, but I don't think simply posting a sign makes it so. I think that the town has to have an ordinance covering a road, or a portion of the road in which they designated the speed limit. And the town's...
Oh, I see what you mean.
...speed ordinance that I've looked at says, you know, unless, uh, there's another...
Unless otherwise posted.
Unless otherwise listed in this statute.
But if we're going from 30...
We're having 35.
This is where we need to check, though. It's quite, if it's from 30, from Route 7...
Right.
To the Police Academy, or just beyond it, is 30.
Right, I don't understand.
Why, how, how do we go about extending it to 30?
Another quarter of a mile.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's all we need to do.
Well, no, that, I mean...
Now I'm laughing, okay.
No, but that's, we need to have Warful checking that out.
It's better to laugh than cry.
Right? It's like, oh...
How, how do we do, about that?
How do we, can we do that?
Can we do that?
Can we do that?
If we can't, well, yeah, but if we can, we can.
And if we're interested, actually see if the sign did get moved, and if you're absolutely positive, the speed ordinance says, did you double check, do you know that, or have you checked with, from when I made the complaint, that, that it actually is, um, like, did the sign move? Did you know if the, if it says, you know, by...
The ordinance basically says, except where listed specifically, the town speed limit on town roads is 35 miles per hour. And then there's a listing of the special exceptions.
Unless otherwise posted.
For example, there's a stretch on West Creek Road...
Right.
...by Kalen's property.
It's 25.
That is 25. That's an example of an exception that's specifically laid out.
A good example, to be honest with you, is Pleasant Street, by the school.
Yeah.
That's 30, 35 through there, which is ridiculous.
I just, yeah.
And the last street by the firehouse to Route 7, that was Short Street.
That's 35?
35.
Yeah.
It's a 35.
I can go faster.
And then it's up to 40.
Yeah.
Well, no, you assume it's 25.
But it isn't. It's 35, because it's not posted, it's 35.
Well, but didn't we go through, if it's not posted, it's 50, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because we just went...
Yeah.
No, we just went through, if it's not posted, with Syndicate Road, we just went through. If it's not posted, it's 50.
Right. If it's not posted, there, it's at 50, yes.
I knew that.
I think there's probably some research we can do on this.
Like, you're waiting, you can go 50 miles an hour, because it's not posted.
Well, I know, but, no, we should look into that.
I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we may not be able to do anything, but at least, we looked into it.
I appreciate you guys looking into it, it's just...
At least we can try.
Yeah.
We can try.
So, should I be, like, reading?
I'll be happy to let you know what we learn, and email you, and if there's going to be more discussion set up.
Okay, I appreciate it, and I really appreciate you guys taking your time.
Same on, some of that, yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate you guys taking, taking your time, and, um, considering all that. So, one more thing, reback to your Saturday field day.
Yes.
Don't you guys think it'd be a good idea to put, like, bring food carts or something down the rec, and make it like an event?
Well, we're discussing that.
This was part of the original Pittsburgh day event.
Right.
I don't know what volunteerism and budget and all those things would be possible to put together in three and a half weeks.
Like, thinking, like, inviting, like, sustainable eats. In Rutland, they have a food truck, sustainable eats, or Roxy's fries, just inviting them to, to get their, their product. It's not saying that we have to give them money, I'm saying, this is a chance for you guys to make money, and...
Sure, sure, sure. It's one of the reasons we've talked with Village Farm, because they just finished a concert series every Tuesday night...
Yeah.
...over the summer, and they have food vendors that have come in.
And there's a possibility First Response may want to bring their little wagon over and have their french fries, and, yeah.
Or like a bounce house, and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Well, now you're talking, well, now you're talking, let's have a second Pittsburgh day.
Right, because we've only got a short window, 3 to 6. They're just fulfilling their obligation to perform, that's basically.
Well, then, like, invite some food vendors, you know?
Well, we'll certainly be inviting the folks at OMA who have underwritten the whole thing.
Oh, yes.
That's a very valuable donation that needs to the town for financing.
But they did want to try to get that into us before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Well, you guys, I appreciate your time, I have to make my final note.
Okay, here's, I don't, have you, did you get the criteria of how they determine speeds?
Yeah.
That was probably in that, okay, I, yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, I read this, it was very disappointing, that's why I didn't respond to it.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for coming.
Well, I appreciate you guys putting it on my heart for seeing into my considerations.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So you'll check with my...
I will, I will, it's kind of a mystery to me, too.
Yeah.
Why, why 30? If the, like, the speed limit's 35?
Well, if we can extend it a little bit.
Who would have moved the sign? I have no idea.
I don't know.
Under what weight?
I don't remember.
And I wouldn't lose any sleep if it was elsewhere, but, you know, we'd like to do it properly.
The only thing that possibly be, that wouldn't be enforceable, if somebody got a ticket, basically. You could put a sign up there, and they still might slow down.
The way she describes it, there's no tickets, right, being written anyway.
Well, yeah, so I'm just saying, if you move the sign to 30...
Yeah.
It's not enforceable, what, nothing, no problem, really.
Well, no, but people...
Let's do it right.
We'll do it, but, on the other hand, even putting that 25 mile an hour curve sign, you know, halfway down that straight stretch...
Yeah.
Safe speed, something, something like that.
People just, it's, it's a psychological thing.
I think, I think maybe the reason why was mostly focused on the Marzegari or driveway situation, trying to get onto the road. Line of sight from that direction is no problem...
Right.
...for driveway.
Right.
But for traffic going around the corner, it's not going to be a problem.
Well, it may be.
And they won't let us do any cutting or anything, so they, that's...
And the inside of the corner is sharper than the outside.
It is.
You have to go off the outside than you're, so...
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, discussion of the Lothrop Blue House.
Yes, there were several things discussed about the Blue House at the last meeting, and, um, one, yes, I did speak with Attorney Gary Cupfer, I believe, yesterday, over the phone about his thoughts on the two matters, which are taxation and zoning. And so, um, I think with regard to zoning, he had no particular opinion, had focused on the taxation issue, and I'd be happy to share his legal opinion with you in executive session. Um, I have put in the packet copies of the tax bills, I mean, the utility bills, water and sewer, that is, paid by a variety of locations at the Lothrop School, one of which is the Blue House. So we do bill them, like we do other customers, based on water meter readings. And, um, of course, their usage will change significantly, with five people in the house versus nobody. So they had averaged like 30 gallons a day there in the past. I would imagine we'd be saying bigger bills going to them in the future, based on the meter usage. Um, I guess that's it for me.
So we'll discuss that in executive session. Update on the listers' office staffing.
Yeah, two issues. First, as you know, we've been talking with a professional appraiser slash assessor, Lisa Wright, and those talks have gone well. She's agreeable to working for the town on an approximate four hours per week basis, to do kind of the high-end analytical computer-based stuff, not the bread and butter of checking on permits, and, um, you know, having meetings with people who have questions. That can all be handled by our existing lister and by the lister's secretary, but, but to come in and be of support, so that we can maximize the value we get, in exchange for a relatively high hourly rate.
Right.
So, um, I read the draft contract that she provided. It looked to have no surprises from my review. Um, if you agree, I think ideally, we'd be able to get select board signatures as she's requested tonight, so we can put that into place. Meanwhile, um, there is another staffing issue I would like to discuss with you in executive session regarding that office, which wouldn't affect whether or not to hire this person.
All right. So I, in this, well, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, my question is, the amount of money that we have been spending to run the listers...
Right.
Uh, if we consider this outside proposal, uh, is there a big difference one way or the other?
Well, we're paying less than we have, because we have been paying 1,800 bucks a month to be split among two or three listers.
Right.
Now, we're paying a one lister an hourly rate, which has turned out in this last month to be significantly less than that 1,800 dollars. So I do think that if those trends continue, we're going to be fine to accommodate the fees quoted, which through June of next year, amount to about 10,800 dollars. So there's plenty, I think, of budget authority to have this person on staff, or, as a, as a consultant, I should say.
We're not changing the cost?
No, we're not exceeding the cost.
We'll be within budget.
I think we'll be within budget. But we'll watch it on a month-by-month basis.
Is there, uh, well, we, we talked about it years ago...
Regardless, by the way, regardless, Joe, regardless of the budgetary impact, I don't know that we have much choice, anyway.
No.
But the good news is, I think we're not exceeding the budget with this.
Right, uh, and that's good. Uh, it seems like there are many, many towns that have gone this route.
Yep.
And, uh, we, we talked about it...
We talked about it a long time ago.
A long time ago.
Yep.
And didn't, didn't pursue it, but, uh, it almost seems to me that now is the time that we better look at it hard, and perhaps undertake it.
And that's a discussion, I think, for town meeting, because what we're trying to do is...
To get us to there.
Get across the finish line of this time before town meeting, at which time there'll maybe be a fork in the road, depending on how things play, play out. Maybe there's, um, wonderful lister candidates who run for election, such that, um, maybe there'll be less appetite to abandon the lister format and hire a permanent, uh, appraiser slash assessor. But I think it's too early to know what you folks will want to do. You'll want to see how this plays out, and how the lister recruitment goes.
Well, the, uh, the fact that there's so many other towns that are going that route, is kind of a guider, in my mind, that it may be well worth, uh, doing.
It's not like the old days where a layperson can easily come in and do the work.
That's another...
It's so highly technical.
That's right.
And so many state mandates.
You get twice every year.
Pretty hard for any individual, uh, to just come right in and, and take over, because it's not easy.
Nope.
I'm always saying...
So are you, are you looking, uh, to, uh, move forward tonight with this?
Yeah, because she's able to join and come in and start working with the lister's office, I think, as early as tomorrow, depending on the lister and the lister secretary's schedule.
We have a motion on the table to accept the contract. Do you have a second?
I'll second it. I have a question.
Any further discussion? There you go.
And maybe this is what you were gonna discuss in reading the emails and stuff. I've read all the stuff from Lisa. There's a question on the number of listers we have right now.
Right.
Is that what you're gonna discuss?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so everybody, enough? Okay, uh, move the question then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed? Ayes have it.
Very good. And there is a signature page, which I'm sure you'll hand out.
Sign his leave away, Joe.
What's that?
Joe, the sign is leave away.
Yeah, Joe, by signing that, you've agreed to pay her salary. You realize that, right?
I'll be cashing my hat around.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to.
This would be just something that'll carry us through till town meeting, and then we have to kind of.
She's given us, she's given us a budget toward June when we have to lodge the next grand list. But she says we can renegotiate after town meeting and see how things are playing out.
All right, because at that, at town meeting, we might, uh, make more permanent change or make some additional changes that may be required.
Right.
Till the time we can do it, I guess, town meeting.
Yeah, it, yeah, that has to be, that has to be done at town meeting, yeah.
It has to be in the morning by January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, moving on. Let's see, the last thing we've got, I guess, is to the transfer station shed roof.
Yeah, I have not given you proposals, because I want to hear from you.
You know.
I want to hear from.
You missed one.
Which one?
The burning ordinance.
Burning ordinance.
Oh, my good gosh, I guess so.
I'm gonna get spitballs.
I, I'm.
It's gonna be a brief update, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm drafting something now. I hope to be able to give it to you for the eighteenth, for you to review. And if you find it satisfactory, or with a tweak satisfactory, we can then schedule whatever public hearings we might need to adopt an amendment.
All right, update on the burning ordinance.
I have not given you the two proposals I've received, only because I want to hear from you first, that two proposals will be adequate. Because I know Alicia had thought maybe we should have more input from contractors. The problem we've had is, we've advertised this in the Brandon Reporter to try to keep it to local contractors. Nobody showed up at our pre-bid meeting. We advertised in the Rutland Herald, and nobody showed to our pre-bid meeting. So then I started picking up the phone and soliciting firms. I called at least a half a dozen, uh, including, um, uh, the two that we've heard from tonight. Um, so if you think that's sufficient, given that you would assume people would take advantage of opportunities for work if they had the time and interest, then I'd be happy to distribute this to you. You can review it tonight or at some other point. But I, before I gave you that information, I wanted you to be comfortable with two bids.
At this point, I'm happy with.
You called a half a dozen people, six people?
We've, we've basis for what, last month, month and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Running out of options.
I think so.
I think so. I think we'll just get done with it.
Yeah, it may be nice to have ten bids, but.
Yeah, but you're not gonna get it, so get them on the table.
And because, you know, different contractors, they might have different approaches. It's not, I can't promise apples to apples, but they know what we're looking for, and they've made proposals. With that said, I'd be happy to distribute this now.
All right, okay, let's do it.
Okay, one, one of those things for each of ya. There's two pages, one from each contractor. Give them, you can pass them all down, Hank. Everyone's gonna get the same two pages. Yep, there we go, and there we go. We've received, um, proposals from Charbonneau, Chucky Charbonneau here in town. And before that, we had proposals from a Roger Luzel of Vermont Roofing. And, um, Chucky Charbonneau has quoted the price at fixing a roof just over the transfer station shed at forty-five hundred, while Luzel has proposed, um, a project at seventy-six hundred and sixty dollars for just the roof over the, over the existing building. To extend that same roof over the next-door garbage compactor to keep the weather out and hopefully not have such heavy hauls out of there, um, Chucky Charbonneau's combined quote would be fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, whereas the combined quote from Vermont Roofing is eighteen thousand nine ninety-four. Chucky Charbonneau says he would be able to do this project, uh, by November first, and that it would take about a two-week project. There's no promise about timetable from Vermont Roofing.
This come out of our.
What they proposing, are they equal in?
Well, I'm trying to tell you, because they know what we want, but they were free to give a proposal of their own making, they're not necessarily equal. So that's why you want to look them over carefully. And maybe it's something you want to come back on, unless you're able to see right to the point and want to make a decision tonight.
It would be nice to have details enough so that we know just what we're buying.
Well, we did, uh, provide you with a copy of the request for proposals, which pointed out that we have a leaky roof, and also pointed out that if possible, if the pricing was right, we would like a combined roof to address the leaky roof and to cover the garbage compactor. Um, those are the broad strokes of the request for proposals we had, knowing that each contractor might approach it a little differently.
Do we have any idea how much extra it's costing us for the snow and ice that we're sending? Is there any, in other words, can we, can we, month by month, once it gets to be December through, you know, March, do we see a, a big uptick or not in weight?
That's an answer I don't have. When we had Casella in town, and again, you might say that's a biased source, but when you had, when we had Casella in town, he said that, um, the boxes have holes in them so that they should shed some water when they're being transported, probably not all of it, especially if it's heavily soaked into the garbage. And he also pointed out that the real benefit would be the operation of the, um, of the, um, compactor itself because of the snow and ice in there.
Right.
So it was mostly the better functioning of the compactor, not the amount of the weight. That's Casella's input. But maybe we could find out from the Solid Waste District or Casella's whether we're seeing a, um, time of year differential, because they do give quarterly reports.
Right, I knew we had those.
Yeah, maybe that combined with a little more time, we could look at this in two weeks. Just a thought.
I mean, that's, I mean, I understand, because Wayne has explained to me having to get down in there and chop ice, and I get that part. But ten thousand dollars right now with.
That's a big jump.
Our loader problems and other things is quite a lot of money.
Yeah, and there's nothing in the budget for capital work at the transfer station, because what you got is basically a eight-by-eight concrete box and not much else.
Right, and, and I mean, I think the roof on that needs to be fixed, because it's, it's, you know, that part I get. But right now, to spend this extra money, unless, I mean, if, if we're, you know, if we've got twenty thousand dollars extra worth of garbage going out, then yes, it's a no-brainer. But if we aren't seeing a huge uptick, and we can get by another year or two with chopping the ice.
It might make a decent investment.
It might, it would, but.
Would you like that information before you act on it? So that's just two more weeks?
I, I would.
Two weeks isn't gonna kill us.
Yep.
No.
No.
I, I would, yeah, that's information I'd like to.
No, good, I agree with you.
It almost seems to me like we ought to have some kind of, uh, a little better information on what they're gonna do. I mean, some kind of, is it possible, would they submit a drawing or something, or give some details?
Uh, what I can do is, at the next meeting, once again, I'll give you the quotes and the requests for proposals that we sent out, so you know that they're trying to accommodate what we've asked them for. I just don't have that handy of me tonight. But I'll put it all together, and maybe if I can, I'll draw you a rough, a rough diagram of what we have.
It'd be nice to.
When was the last time you were at the transfer station?
Not lately.
Okay.
I'm like Hank.
I was told that Hank Pelkey went down just last week.
Really? You beat me.
First time in fifteen years.
Fifteen years?
Was that that thunderstorm we had last week, that bad one?
But I think the point, Joe.
Lightning was striking down there.
Is that, what we have now is an eight-by-eight transfer station shed, granite concrete walls.
Yeah.
And on the left-hand side of it, you have a recycled compactor that's already sealed out from the weather.
Yep.
And to the right of it, right next to it, is a garbage compactor which has an open hopper.
It shouldn't be covered.
And probably should be covered, if it makes sense to spend that money to save the money that we have in mind. So, just to give you just a broad overview, short roof or longer roof?
Yeah, exactly. We get the roof on the building fixed, and then, and whoever does it, we say next, you know, to plan on.
That'd be the question, whether you can build the one piece with kind of an expectation of adding on to it.
I don't know why you couldn't.
I don't know why you couldn't either.
I, no, I mean, you may end up having to put the framework up for the roof, but without doing the roof and the other stuff, you know, you'll, it'll be a little more than the forty-five hundred to do that, but, and just have it ready, and then budget for it.
Let's, um, go ahead and put this back on for the eighteenth.
Let's table it for tonight.
Okay, yep, and you get that information for us?
I sure will.
I'd feel better if I could compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges, when it comes to what they're proposing.
Well, not being, not being a roof contractor, I was not in the position to tell them all the specs required of the roofing project. That's why I left it to the contractor to propose their own approach that they thought would be the most cost-effective.
Close to twenty thousand dollars there.
No, no, it's not.
It seems like a roof would be a damn good thing over that stuff.
Well, put it this way, definitely a good idea over the shed where they're getting wet.
Oh, yeah.
The compact, well, the compact, it would run better.
Yeah.
Update on the, uh, burning proposal. What we got on the?
Um, I have drafted something which I hope to have on the agenda for the eighteenth, um, of September.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's our update on the burning ordinance. Shut up, I didn't hear it.
I thought so, too.
Okay.
I got it.
You got it, well, I didn't, I didn't know.
The last item is those audit-related financial questionnaires that Helen and Liz have asked.
Yep.
He signed off.
Any objections to signing those?
Nope. And one, and I should have, I was thinking we were discussing the sidewalk again, and I don't know why.
Oh, but I can certainly give you an update if you'd like.
Well, I, I finally got hold of Tim Rice today.
Oh, okay.
And talked with him.
Okay.
And, well, can I?
Can we put that under select ones?
Yes.
Put it under, yeah, put me back under comments.
Sure.
And I went over, I explained that we had the two-hundred-and-fifty feet of granite curbing. Were you able to get hold of the state and find out if there's any chance of getting any more?
I have not, but I will.
Okay, all right, and.
What I focused on was, just following up with Derek Kennison, uh, who said he thought it was a good constructive discussion that he was here for. And I just took an initial, very rough stab at a request for proposals, request for bids. Not that we're going out to bid tomorrow or the next day, but to show some forward motion on this thing. And to list all the ingredients that V-Trans wants us to, to, to include in our project. So nothing's in, pardon me, concrete or stone yet.
Or asphalt.
Yeah, but go ahead.
So, in, in talking with Tim, because I looked at your proposal in digging out twelve inches and all this, which to me is a waste. And so I talked to him, and, and what he's talking is, uh, preformed concrete curbing that's set in, similar to the granite blocks.
Yeah.
And he's like, if you got the granite blocks, you might just as well use what you've got.
And then add on.
And then add on. And so I said, do we really need to dig out that foot thirteen inches of fill? I mean, you've got obviously a good base there now. The sidewalk, it's old and it's deteriorated, but it's not going anywhere.
No, it's base.
And he said, no, he's like, what I would recommend is just strip the old pavement, so you're back down to gravel again, and then you shim it, and then you do your two inches. And that, I think, is another way for us to save some money on this project. He said the one disadvantage is, they won't warranty it if they don't put a whole new sub-base on it. But he's like, it's, it's not a fifty-year sidewalk, you know, it's a ten, fifty. Well, we, if it's a fifty-year sidewalk, we're not gonna be here to worry about it, so. It's, but I think, you know, I, in talking with him, I think there's some ways that we can lower the cost of this down to make it reasonable.
Good, good.
Another thing that came to my mind is the mailboxes are all back out of the way. Now, if we put curbing in there, the mailboxes gonna have to be brought out by the curbing?
None of the mailman will have to walk to the mailbox, Tony. That's not our problem. There's only two.
You know, you can't move only one.
They have to move on the other side of the road.
I think there's only two mailboxes, so.
Well, we went through that with the sidewalk on Arch Street, and, um.
They have to go on one side of the road.
They'll go one side of the road, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because I mean, if we, if we put in a new, a new sidewalk, we don't want any, we don't want the mailman driving on it.
Nope.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
There's a hell of a lot of cuts in it anyway down through there, with all the driveways and Eaton Hall and.
Well, yeah, and it takes out a lot of sidewalk that needs to be built.
Yeah.
And I looked at it today, most of the, because there's walkways that come from people's houses, and I didn't measure them, but eyeballing them, most of those are a couple inches above the existing sidewalk already. And then, you know, the roadway is down an inch or two, so it'll be just a slight taper from the sidewalk down to those walkways. So I don't think that'll be a big issue either. It isn't like we're gonna have to do a lot at each walkway.
The good news is, you're only dealing with one property owner, V-Trans, rather than asking everybody to feel cooperation, which is good. Because they got the big right of way.
Right, yeah.
We're lucky that way.
Yep, okay.
Good. Is that it? I, that's.
I guess, yeah.
For our business tonight, then. We thank everybody for coming.